Okay, we're live.
Okay, very good. All right, I will call the meeting to order. I will read the results of the election results for board member of the Board of Education of the Verona Public Schools. Lisa Freshy received 5,500 votes. Writing candidates received a total of 565 votes. Therefore, Lisa Freshy will is the winner of the seat that is vacant on the Board of Education. And at this time, I would like to administer the oath of office. So, Mrs. Freshy, if you would, please stand and raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Lisa Freski.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same and to the governments established in the United States.
To the same and to the governments established in the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
I state your name.
I, Lisa Freski.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of member of the Board of Education.
For the office of member of the Board of Education.
And I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform all duties of that office.
And justly perform all the duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Mr. Turner. Thank you, everybody. That's very nice. Happy New Year to everyone, 2021. Um, so what we are going to do next is we have to do our internal elections. We need a nomination for the presidency and then we need a motion and a second before we can vote onto that.
I am proud to nominate Lisa Freshky for president.
A second. Is there any discussion on that? Is there any nominations from the floor or any comments? Thank you, Mr. Day and Miss Drappi and the board. I will put that to vote. Ernie, do you call the roll to vote for that?
Mr. Allworth.
Oh, sorry, let me unmute. Yes.
Mrs. Drappi.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Sure, I like Lisa. Yes.
Thank you, Jim. This whole crowd.
Mrs. Prisco.
Yes.
And Mrs. Freshy.
Yes, thank you. I.
Congratulations, Madam President.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the vote of confidence and I'm very proud to serve and work in the district with amazing educators. It's really a privilege for me. Now, we would need a motion. We would need a nomination, excuse me, for vice presidency. Is there any nomination for vice president?
I nominate Sarah Drappi.
Is there a second or another nomination?
Oh, second.
So moved Sarah Drappi nominated by Mr. Day, second by Mr. Allworth. Is there any other discussion or nomination on that? All right then, so let's go to vote.
Okay, Mr. Allworth.
Yes.
Mrs. Drappi.
Yes, and thank you.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco.
Yes.
And Mrs. Freshy.
Absolutely.
Congratulations.
Excellent. Congratulations, Mrs. Drappi.
Thank you, Ms. Freski. It'll be exciting to work alongside you. So thank you.
Yeah, this is.
I just want to say, we have a female president and vice president now, which is, which is a nice thing, right? We don't think we've had that in Verona.
Breaking those glass ceilings. Here we go.
But I thank you, Sarah, for agreeing to move forward as vice president. I enjoyed my role for a year and I'm happy to pass it towards to you to have all the fun I did.
Thank you for the nomination, Jim.
You're welcome.
All right, awesome. All right, so we are going to officially call the meeting to order and it is 7:12 PM. And I'm going to ask everybody to please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and freedom of the world. Thank you, everyone. And the reading of the meeting notice. This meeting is being conducted in compliance with the open meeting session that the Verona Board of Education passed a resolution at its annual reorganization meeting held on. Do we put in today's date?
Yes.
Yeah, so I'm just gonna make the correction. Reorganization meeting held on January 5th of 2021. The meeting set forth the schedule of its regular meetings, which resolution was within seven days of passage. The schedule was sent to the Verona Cedar Grove Times, the Star Ledger, the Township of Verona, and the VEA. Postings of this meeting setting forth the time, location, and agenda were posted at the Verona Board of Education office and on the Verona Public Schools District website. The Verona Board of Education operates under a consent agenda format. Any board member has the right to have an item pulled to be voted upon or discussed separately. Copies of tonight's agenda and resolutions have been made available to the public and the press. And Mr. Turner, can you please do a roll call for attendance?
Mr. Allworth.
Here.
Mrs. Drappi.
Here.
Mr. Day.
Here.
Mrs. Prisco.
Here.
And Mrs. Freshy.
I am here.
We have a call.
Thank you very much. And we have two presentations on for this evening. Dr. Zianicio's report comes first. So, Dr. Zianicio, do you want to do your report and then you could introduce the presenters?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Freski. Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year and welcome back from what I hope was a well-deserved and restful holiday and December break for everyone. I'd like to first start off by just offering my congratulations to Mrs. Freski on being voted to another term on the Board of Ed. Also, congratulations to Mrs. Freski and Mrs. Drappi, who will both serve as president and vice president respectively. Good luck to you both. I look forward to working alongside the two of you in the, in those capacities. I will keep my superintendent report brief tonight and concede my time. We do have those two presentations this evening to provide updates on the high school and the middle school hybrid schedules. So we have with us this evening, Mr. Cogdill, our principal of Verona High School, along with Mr. Lancaster, our assistant principal, and Mrs. Gataletta, our supervisor of counseling at Verona High, who will be providing an update on the revisions to the high school schedule based on the feedback and the work of the reopening committee. And then following the high school presentation, we will have an update from Mr. Galbercheck and Mrs. McNeil, our principals at HBW Middle School, who will also provide an update regarding the feedback from their school reopening committee. So following each presentation, the board and the public will have an opportunity to ask any questions. So without any further ado, I'm going to turn it over right now to Mr. Cogdill, Mr. Lancaster, and Mrs. Gataletta, who will present the updates to the Verona High School schedule.
Thank you, Dr. Zianicio, and congratulations to Lisa and Sarah. I'm gonna do the share the screen thing, so just be patient with me for a moment. Okay, so tonight I'm going to be presenting the new high school schedule, which started today. And when we return to school in two weeks, in hybrid, it will, it will be in place as well. So, one second. Okay, the purpose of the committee and the subcommittees was to provide the school and the district administration the stakeholder feedback so that improvements and changes to the schedule and reopening plan can be made by the administration. The reopening committee had met four times on November 17th, 24th, December 1st, December 8th. And we planned to meet again on February 16th to evaluate how the schedule is going after it has had time to run for a bit. There was a diverse set of opinions shared by parents, teachers, and students. The total number of people involved in providing feedback in the new schedule was close to 90-plus people. And I'm gonna go through what that, what that participation looked like in the next few slides. So, parents who volunteered to serve in the VHS reopening committee were selected by the SCA leadership. The only parameters that I gave that the people that were selected reflected the diverse opinions within the community and that we had at least three parents at, for each grade level. In total, we had 12 parents who participated on the reopening committee. With that said, there were 32 parents who volunteered in addition to those 12 for the, for the reopening committee. And we had to keep the number somewhat manageable to have constructive conversations. But one of the ways that we wanted to address and make sure that those 32 people had, had a voice on the committee was the 12 parents that were selected for the reopening committee had to go back to the 32 parents who were not selected to get their feedback as well and share with those 32 parents what the reopening committee has, has been discussing and to get their feedback. The parents then would return to the committee and share the parents' feedback that were not selected so that we were able to involve those 44 parents in, in the conversations. In addition to that, the, the 12 parents who served on the reopening committee also spoke to other people within the community who had not volunteered for the reopening committee. And they, they also shared their feedback as well. And, and all, like I said, all of their feedback was shared and, and it was, it was great to listen to. We had 16-plus staff members involved. The teachers were selected by a VEA VHS building representative. The only parameters that were given would be that the, that the staff members that were selected reflected the diverse opinions of the staff and represented as many departments within the building as possible so that, so that it was a well-rounded group and that there was 10 staff members. There were six staff members that were not selected in the, in the same parameters for the parents or for the teachers. We asked that those 10 staff members keep the six staff members who were not selected in the loop, listen to their feedback and bring their feedback back to the reopening committee. In addition to that, staff members that served in the reopening committee also listened to other staff members in the building and shared their feedback as well. During our meeting, it was discussed whether or not students should serve on the reopening committee. When listening to the, the, the parents on the reopening committee, I think that, that many of them wanted to keep the conversation between adults and I respect that, but we still wanted to hear the voice of students at the high school. So, we formed a student subcommittee. The director of school counseling, Mrs. Gataletta, sent out an email to every staff, every student at Verona High School and invited them to participate in the subcommittee. Every single student, 100% of the students that volunteered participated in the subcommittee meetings. And there, there were, there were a few of those as well. And they provided their feedback and then that feedback was brought back to the reopening committee. I'd like to state that much of our conversation, the reopening committee, had to do with student feedback as well. I want to thank everyone who served, all the students, the parents, staff, guardians, who served in these committees. As we know, volunteering is not easy. It takes a lot of time. Each one of these meetings ran approximately two hours, if not longer, in length. And so I, I just want to thank everybody for their time and for the time that they spent outside of those meeting times to, to speak with people who were not selected to serve and then bringing that feedback to the reopening committee. So, when the reopening committee first began, we, we wanted to figure out where people were coming from. What was their, what was their number one thing they were looking to accomplish as part of the reopening committee? So we surveyed the members of the reopening committee. What this, what this slide shows is 45.5% wanted to see increased instructional time, meaning more, more minutes per class and more classes throughout the school day. The second big one was having four classes before lunch so that when students came to the school for in-person instruction, they got, they, they had the ability to see their teacher in person for that additional class. Traditionally, pre-pandemic, the high school operated three classes before lunch and three classes after lunch. By putting four before lunch, when the students come into the building, it's one extra moment that that student can meet with his or her teacher. And then, as you could see by the legend, there were other things as well. Increased passing time, limiting screen time, 60-minute lunch, 80-minute lunch, asynchronous Wednesdays every week or every other week. The next question we asked the reopening committee, what was their number two goal? Not surprising, not surprisingly, it, it just flipped. The number two goal was having the schedule offer four classes before lunch and the second number two goal would be increasing instructional time. So, we, we see a pattern here that, that, that had developed early on, what the big ideas were. One of the, one of the next questions we asked them is, well, you know, how long should classes be? And what we found is 82% of, of the people on the committee who answered the survey wanted the classes to be at least 50 minutes in length. 18% felt they should be 45 minutes. One of the things that was interesting in the reopening committee was that in COVID and in, in using virtual, what we're in right now, this, this, this virtual medium, everything takes a little bit longer than it did when we were in person. So I think that people felt that going to the 45 minutes may not offer enough instructional time to accomplish the curriculum goals. And this is something that was shared with me by Dr. Miller as well, who is, you know, the director of curriculum instruction and assessment, who felt equally that we needed enough time to make sure that we were able to teach meaningful lessons. And I agree. We asked what time the school day should begin. In November and December, we were asking students to show up at 8:00 AM and classes would begin at 8:30. When we first started, we thought it would take us about a half an hour to, to get through the temperature checks, collect the COVID form information and go through that. And at first it did. We, we all became better at doing it pretty quick, both the students and the staff. We, we just got better at doing it. And we found ourselves able to accomplish that in 15 minutes. So, as you could see from this slide, 63% wanted school to start at 8:15 AM. 90% wanted 8:15 or earlier. The other thing that I want to add about it, about the difference between 8:15 and 8:30, when talking to Mr. Merkler, the athletic director, in order to get students for away games on buses prior to 3:00 PM, starting school at 8:30 complicates that. So that, that's another reason why 8:15, as you will see in the schedule soon, was selected as the school start time. When we're in a hybrid model, how many in-person, a person classes should there be before lunch? The committee felt that we should have four before lunch. Similar to what I said before, having four before lunch afford students who are in person with their teachers one extra period a day in order to meet their teachers in person. The schedule should be as close to the regular school day as possible. 72% agreed that we should try to build a schedule that was, that resembled a pre-pandemic schedule and 27% didn't. So the big ideas that emerged from, from the surveys was increased instructional time and four classes before lunch. And the other areas that we discussed were screen time, mental health, teacher office time, lunch, passing time, and consistency between a full virtual schedule and a hybrid schedule and asynchronous Wednesdays. So, a lot, a lot of people might wonder, like, why move to a six-period day? One, we, we found out that the teacher office hours that we, that were being utilized in the November-December schedule were not being fully utilized by students and staff. And the next few slides will, will, will show you a little bit about that. Sorry. We heard from teachers that due to the limited number of classes that were being taught a day for a day, that it was difficult to get in the full curriculum. And finally, because we're trying to fit as much into the curriculum within four classes a day, lessons, lessons were becoming less engaging and we're, we're being replaced by direct instruction, meaning mostly lecture. By moving to a six-period day, we're hoping to solve some of those concerns. This slide here was, was a, was a survey shared with teachers and what, what it shows us is that 60% of the teachers said that when they held office hours, the, the, the students showed up less than 40% of the time. So, when, when I, when I look at the next few slides, this is, the students said sort of the same thing. 86% of the students said they go to the office hours less than 40, 40% of the time. 47% said they never went to an office hour. And the parents said something very similar. 86% said, said they went to office hours less than 40% of the time. And 51 said their students never attended these office hours. So, what we learned from these, these surveys was that after 12:45, our students, a large portion of our students, were not really engaged in enough instruction. And we had an opportunity to increase instruction at the second half of the day. So at this point, I'd like to talk about and share the schedule. Okay, so, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to walk through this. I don't have a laser pointer or anything like that, so just bear with me. If you could see under the column where it says start, staff reports at 7:45 AM. And there's 15 minutes to get ready in the morning, put your coat away and get prepared to do the student check-in, where we do temperature checks and collect COVID form information. Classes would begin at 8:15 and go to 9:05. That's a 50-minute class. There's five minutes between each period. And that goes all the way to 11:50. At 11:50 to 12:15, there are teacher office hour times, where students who are in the building can go back to their teacher in the building and meet with them, have follow-up questions to things that they might have, they might have issues with. And students who are at home can log into a Google Meet and have that teacher time that they may need. Then, they, they can go to, the teachers can leave the building at 12:15 and go to lunch and go home for lunch. And I think that offers a great work-life balance. Lunch is 55 minutes. Now, if a student decides that they don't need to see a teacher for teacher office time, as you remember the, the slides before, many students just didn't feel like they always had to do that. If they don't need to do that, it's an 80-minute gap between block four and block five. And that provides students with a lot of opportunity to start their homework, meet with a club, or, or just go outside, get some fresh air and get off the screen. At 1:10, blocks five and six start at, at 1:10, and those are fully virtual for everyone. At 2:55 to 3:05, we have office time again with the teachers and that's fully virtual. So the total instructional time is 300 minutes. And when you add in the teacher office time, it's 330, 35 minutes. Sorry, my, my light went off. 335 minutes per day. Now, when you move over to the other chart in the A, B, C, and D day, you could see how the periods rotate. And in A day, it's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and then a B day, it starts where it left off, 7, 8, 1, 2. And the reason it does that is so that when students are in person with their teachers, those, those periods in the afternoon have an equal opportunity to rotate to the morning so they can be in person with their, with their teachers. So the new schedule allows teachers to leave the building at 12:15. The new schedule allows students to meet with their teachers for in-person office time. The new schedule builds in 28 additional classes per subject, which equates to two months more per subject. When we were pre-pandemic, classes, we, we were an A, B, C, D block. On one of those letter days, one class always dropped off. The average month has about 22 working days in it. So when you, when you add in the drop schedule plus the 22 working days, those 28 additional class periods equates to two months more per subject, which is gonna help us meet the needs of the curriculum. The new schedule allows classes to rotate so the classes are not always at the same time every day. The new schedule returns the students to a schedule that more closely resembles the pre-pandemic school. The new schedule allows teachers to teach more of the curriculum using creative lessons. It brings consistency to the schedule. That was one of the big things that the parents wanted to see, whether we were fully virtual or in a hybrid model. Like, right now, we're fully virtual. I think the parents wanted to see that the schedule wasn't changing. It doesn't matter whether or not we're fully virtual or hybrid. This is the schedule. And finally, special education program will remain the same as it was in the previous schedule. So when I do a comparative analysis of the, of the three schedules, in column A, we have what the high school schedule was pre-pandemic. This was back in last January. So block one and two were 55 minutes apiece. Blocks three and four were 60 minutes and blocks five and six were 55, for a total number of minutes of 3:40. When science labs would rotate into blocks three or four, it was an additional 10 minutes. So you would have, on those days, 350 minutes of instructional time. In our November-December schedule with 60 minutes a period for four straight periods, it was 240 minutes of instruction. In the new schedule, at 50 minutes a class for six periods, it's 300 minutes of instruction. But one of the things the committee decided to do was ask that students who are on virtual or remote instruction be allowed to take their physical education classes asynchronously, meaning they can go outside, off the screen and get some exercise, record their, record their exercises and make sure that they share them with their teacher. So when you take the 300 and you subtract those 15 minutes for PE where we get the students off the screen, it's 250 minutes of screen time instruction in the new schedule, which equates to just 10 minutes more than what we were doing in November-December schedule, which is a 4.17% increase in instructional screen time. And I think that's an important thing for me to highlight, that I think one of the things that we're gonna talk about in the rest of the slideshow are some of the concerns that people may have with the schedule. But I, I, I think I'm quite proud of the fact that we were able to increase the number of classes that meet throughout the day so that we can meet the needs of the curriculum. But we did it without, we, we did it by only increasing screen time for students by 10 minutes a day. So, as you could see, at the bottom, the actual minutes per week between the three schedules. Under the old schedule, students were in, were in school for 1,760 minutes. Under B, they were in school for 1,200 minutes. And under the new schedule, it's 1,500 minutes. But if you look right above it, the pink, in the pink parts of this graph, the delta between column B and C is 1,200 to 1,250, and that's for subtracting for PE. So at this point, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Mr. Lancaster, who's gonna address the concerns that we've heard about the schedule so that maybe we can assuage some of these concerns. Mr. Lancaster?
Tom, you're on mute now. Sorry, sorry. Good evening, everyone. We want to address the concerns that some families raised and offer insight that we hope you will find reassuring. The first concern is that this is the third schedule change this year. We all heard the concerns in the community and at the Board of Ed meetings that our students were not in school enough. As a result, each school was instructed to hold reopening committee meetings with parents and staff to discuss the schedule. A VHS also involved all students who volunteered to serve on a subcommittee. So anyone, any student who volunteered was included. It's important to remember, if the objective of the committee was to discuss the schedule for the purpose of making changes, then changes to the schedule were inevitable. So the next concern is too much direct instruction in our remote or virtual environment. There is and will be a continued reinforcement and effort to get students off of the screen to work on activities during class. So early in, in this school year, we shared some, some ideas with our staff. And I'd just like to review some of them and explain some of them. First, our thought was that the lesson would begin with a do-now. So that's an example, an activity where students will come in and as soon as they enter, enter the classroom, whether they're walking into the room or they're in a Google Meet, there's, there's something there that requires them to, to tackle right away. While the students are working on the do-now, teachers can take attendance. So there's no lost time and we can, we can either build upon the momentum of the earlier lesson or generate some momentum to have a really strong class experience. So, after students finish a do-now, which might, it could be anything from two minutes to as long as 10 minutes, the teacher with the students will collectively review the do-now, talk about the lesson objective, any essential questions. Talk about the lesson objective, any essential questions. And then after they discuss the lesson objectives and essential questions. Class will get into direct instruction or mini lesson. Where we'd like to keep that within, you know, the, the period of. Could be ten minutes, could stretch into as much as eighteen, nineteen, twenty minutes if necessary. But we were hoping that it would be a chunk of the lesson and approximately twelve to fifteen minutes. Next, after the mini lesson, students would then tackle the, the problem. This is where. A student would take what he or she has learned and practice it. It, it, at that point, it could be something where they work individually. It could be in small groups. But this is where they apply and practice what they learned in the mini lesson. After, so that, that part could be off-screen. So it gets them away from the direct instruction and it really depends on the specific class and lesson, but that's. Far away from direct instruction. That's individual or small group work. And again, focusing on what was taught during the mini lesson. Then afterwards. When that component, that period is done, the class will regroup for. Collectively for a whole group meeting, so they'll go back to the Google Meet and review the activity. During that stage. And at more near the end of it, a teacher would take some assessment. This is where the teacher can gain some insight into. How close the class is to meeting the objective, where everyone stands. And it's a chance to gather some data and not only understand where each student is, but to plan. Is this a time when a teacher may want to schedule some later one-on-one time? To reach out to a student individually or to look and see, is there a pattern here? Is there an issue? Is there something that we need to redress? To address, or is there something here that sparked up that we could use to? Kind of springboard into another part of the lesson or maybe pull in other ideas. So it's a, it's a, it's a chance to gather information. And utilize it for future instruction and to get some insight into where each student stands. It doesn't necessarily have to be something that goes into the gradebook. And then afterwards, closure. This could be to just reinforce an idea. This could be an exit slip, which might also be a part of the assessment. Or this could be a chance to cover logistics. This could be a chance to say, to tell the students, look. It's been a great lesson. We've done well and to kind of realize that the environment of working. Virtually and divided is challenging, so it could be a chance to just kind of pull everybody together. But ultimately, it's, it's a way to just. Let's end here and know where we're going. There might be. An extension placed on Google Classroom for those who are interested. Or it might be a way to just say where we'll, we'll meet up on during the next lesson. So the next concern is students have too much screen time. And as Mr. Cogdals said earlier, the screen time increases four-point-one-seven percent or ten minutes per day. Next is how do we increase the number of classes without increasing screen time? So. Again, we went to, we included the idea that came up with the committee. Of moving physical education to asynchronous instruction for those who are at home. So this might give a student a chance to move, to go outside and run or to do some activity away from the screen. It also, and at, at that point, we, we developed some student choice, thus increasing interest and motivation. That we could use in other ways. We also moved classes from sixty minutes to fifty minutes. The result is twenty-eight additional classes per subject between January and June. This equates to two more months of school and affords our teachers and students the opportunity to teach and learn. The entire scope of the curriculum. And we don't really, we don't see this as a committee as, here's more work because there are twenty-eight more classes. But we see this as a chance to, to, for everyone to get together and work and focus on the curriculum. Instead, and instead of rushing, it really spreads it out and gives us much more, much more time together. The, the next concern was that there is too much homework. It was reported to the, in the committee meetings by teachers that homework amounts were greater because there was not enough class time to cover the curriculum. With the change in the schedule, each class will now meet an additional twenty-eight times between January and June. This means homework may be able to be decreased. It's important to note, that's a teacher decision. We have great teachers who are in the classroom, who look at what's happening. Again, we're reflecting back on what I brought up earlier. They'll look at the data. Evaluate it, think about their plans, what students need. And determine how to use the homework to ultimately meet these measures that they have. More classes does not mean more homework. If a teacher was satisfied with the amount of homework assigned when the schedule was a four-period day. The same amount of homework or less should be sufficient in a six-period day. The new schedule has eighty minutes per day between blocks four and five. This time is available for students if they wish to start their homework. So in that time, if a student wants to, to utilize it for some homework, that's an option. If it's a time to really step away from the screen. That's an option to work with a teacher. So there, there's a lot of flexibility to meet the diverse needs of our students. AP coursework. Students at Verona High School are not required to take an AP course or an AP exam. I really want to emphasize that. Students at Verona High School are not required to take an AP course or an AP exam. AP coursework may require a greater degree of effort for students who decide to take an AP course. Some have said that the schedule was designed to provide more time for AP students to learn the AP curriculum. The school's schedule affords a time for all levels, AP, honors, NCP, to learn the curriculum. It's, the, the, the schedule is focused on meeting the needs of every student. Now I'd like to transfer this to Mrs. Gataletta, who will focus on mental health.
Thanks, Mr. Lancaster. We've heard a lot about mental health over the last six months since COVID began. And I think one of the biggest concerns from students after the schedule was released, that we, you know, we're not thinking of their, their mental health. Or, you know, putting that on the back burner. And I really wanted to emphasize that that isn't the case. You know, the counseling department has put measures in place to try and support our students as best we can. And gather information about really what our students are facing on a daily basis. So in October, the department, each counselor surveyed their parents. With a very short three-question survey that asked them, you know, is there anything we need to know about your student or your family's circumstances based off of COVID? Have you been impacted in any way, open-ended? We asked them how we could best assist your, the student. Academically, and we asked them how to best assist them socially or personally. Some common themes emerged from the feedback after two hundred and sixty parents responded to the various surveys that the counselor sent out. One of the biggest ones was our juniors and seniors concerned about the college search and the college application process. I think that was a huge stressor for our students and it continues to be. Because there are still some unanswered questions with what college is going to look like next year. What the application process is going to look like next year? What is the college search process going to look like as far as visits? So a lot of trepidation and nerves around the college search process. A lot of them, you know, responded that they would like check-ins with the school counselor. Which is definitely easier when we're in person, but I know the counselors have been doing a great job with checking in with students that needed them. A, a big theme was they wanted students back in the building as much as possible. Obviously, that was out of the counselor's control, but it was, you know, important to note. And then the other theme that emerged was wanting students in clubs and activities and other extracurriculars, because that is a big place where they get socialization. And they get to see their friends, even if it's virtual. It's just interaction that's outside of the classroom. So one of the other things that emerged from our student reopening committee actually was the idea that the counselors, starting this month, are going to be pushing in. Or which we call pushing, and we're going to be joining PE classes. To cover various topics like resiliency, identifying anxiety and, and depression symptoms, and what do you do? If you or someone you know is maybe struggling with a mental health concern. Coping skills is going to be a big focus. As well as, you know, some mindfulness, meditation, things like that. And it was interesting because in the student reopening committee, I had shared that one of our ideas as a. Department was to kind of have these, what we call lunch and learns. Where we open it up for students to voluntarily join. You know, for topics that they're interested in. And the students actually are the ones that came forward and said, you know what? I don't think this should be optional. I think this has to happen and everyone needs to hear it. Which is how, you know, going into the PE classes was, came about. So I was really proud of the students and I think they did an awesome job. In that particular moment, but also altogether, I ran all of the student committee meetings and the kids that came and volunteered, they voiced their opinions. And I think they just were awesome. So I want to, I know we thanked them earlier, but I want to thank them again. In addition, the counselors are available every day from eleven fifty to twelve fifteen now with the new schedule. And also by appointment. So we've been doing virtual office hours every day since the beginning of the school year, and it's definitely something that the students are not necessarily taking advantage of. And I want to take an opportunity to encourage them. If they have a quick question or they need some support or they just want to talk to their counselor for a couple of minutes. Those office hours are a great option for that to happen. INS is something that we have always been practicing and, and put into place, but definitely this year, we have. Spent much more time than normal talking about our students that are really struggling academically and. And I think a big issue that we're seeing with students this year is the lack of engagement with some of the students that are struggling. So we've actually been able to, you know, as a team, put INS plans together that afford students the ability to come to the building every day. Because there are just some students that are not accessing their education virtually. Causing them to fail classes. And we've been able as a team to put some supports in place in addition to actually coming in the building every day. As well as that, we put together a pandemic response team earlier in the year. It was made up of administrators, our school nurse, Verona Police Department representative, teachers, and a parent. And what we did in this weekly meeting was we reviewed requests from parents to change cohorts or. Again, ask their students if their students could come in daily, just expressing concerns about mental health, concerns about. Academic success with certain students and the committee really discussed each student individually. Not knowing who they were, that we had anonymous discussions, but discussing the circumstances of each individual and making a decision. Based on the information that we were given of whether or not the student, you know, warranted it, whether that was a cohort change. To be with a sibling or, you know, for a number of different reasons, or coming into the building every day as opposed to just the one out of three days for the cycle. And that's really it. Are there any questions?
Ms. Gataletta, are you asking for questions from the? From the?
Yes.
Board and us?
The board, yes.
No, I, I think it was a great presentation because not having a student in, I read all these, we get the, the memos and we look through it. And it's hard for me to conceptualize what it actually is. So having you walk through it is extremely helpful and. Thank you. I appreciate it. Does anybody have any comments or questions from the board?
Yeah, I just want to add, I, I, I know, you know, I've heard a lot about the screen time and this gave a little clarity to, I think, myself and to the public about. The screen time and, you know, with the asynchronous gym class, I think that's very helpful. And, and again, the mental health, I know Mrs. Gataletta just went over that. That's, that's very critical. And so I do appreciate. The group and the, the parents and the students and the teachers. And the administration, of course, to try to put all this together and really address the concerns, but really come forward with a, a great plan. That, you know, I know it's only a couple of days into it, you know, in the, in the wonderful twenty-twenty-one and. You know, but I'm glad to see that things are moving forward and, and we definitely are. Getting more, you know, curriculum time for the students, which I think is. Important for the students and the teachers to be able to provide that full curriculum for the, for the rest of the year.
I have some comments and questions. I also want to thank all the volunteers who participated in the committees and the subcommittees. Parents, teachers, and students. I think. I'm, I'm hoping, I'm sure it was very eye-opening for everybody to see. That there are just so many opinions on the best way to move forward. And, you know, while it may not be possible to make everybody happy, I think. Using the survey data in a really constructive manner, as shown in the presentation. Was, was really well done. So thank you, everybody, for that. I have two questions. The first question I have is about. For the, the sort of check-ins during PE class from the counselors. How is that going to work if PE is asynchronous?
So for those class periods, they wouldn't be asynchronous. So that's, it's just once a month that we would ask, notify the students in advance that they were expected to attend their class.
That makes a lot more sense. Thank you. And then the other question I have is, you know, I think. No matter what, and I'm trying to see this from a student point of view, you know, because as a teacher, I am also, especially on Tuesday night board meetings, I am on my computer. On some sort of Google Meet, interacting with somebody virtually from roughly eight-thirty AM until sometimes past ten-thirty, eleven o'clock at night. So I understand the screen fatigue and I guess coupled with. I guess this idea of homework fatigue, because a lot of that homework is done on the computer and that's the fastest way. For their teachers to get that data back and assess them. So I guess what should students and parents do if they are finding that they are still. Struggling, whether it's dealing with screen fatigue or if they're still struggling. With the homework load. And again, you know, it should be teacher discretion. That's my personal opinion, you know, I think micromanaging is not best practice. I think we can all agree to that. But, you know, without like a distinct policy on it. And certainly those who take AP classes are going to have more homework and that's just the nature of the program. But I guess what should, like, what can we tell students and parents to do? In terms of the hierarchy and, and who should they first contact and so on and so forth if they're still struggling?
That's a great question. So, you know, this is a common question too, and it's, it's been an issue we've been. Wrestling with and trying to figure out for, and, and Dr. Miller, I think, will attest is, I don't think there's a single topic we discuss more in the Verona High School. Than homework. It's, it's, it's a tough thing to, to, to square away because. Homework has, has some positives and, but there's, there's a downside to homework as well. There, there's probably a. A law of diminishing returns when you speak about homework. I think for students, and it's what I even tell my own, my own kids at home, if, if they feel that they're having too much homework. Number one, I think they need to talk to their teacher. I think that's the first step. And I think that is a fair conversation to have with. With your teacher. If you're spending. An hour and a half to two hours on one subject every night, and then you have six other subjects that you have to get through. There's clearly an issue and I think that it warrants a conversation with the teacher first. And I think that's fair for the teacher before, before the student goes to an administrator. Or, or goes to, you know, anybody, really talk to your teacher. They're the ones who are, are educating you. I think that if a student feels uncomfortable with that, you know, ask your parents to have that meeting with you, maybe. Or if you're not comfortable asking a parent, you, you have a school counselor that's willing to have that conversation with you with the teacher as well. I think that's another place to start. If you feel that after that conversation, that it's, it's still not something that you're satisfied with or the outcome isn't what you want it to be. We recommend that you go to the subject supervisor. And, and for business classes, that's Mr. Lancaster. Or, or myself for, for classes like music and art, for, for humanities, and that would be English, world language. History, that would, that would be Mr. Shells, and, and for the STEM classes, that would be Mr. Stevenson. And they then would, you know, have a conversation with them and they would listen to the student and the parent and. Try to drill in a little bit deeper about what's going on. And there's a lot of reasons why the homework could be too much. It could be. It could be too much. It could be the students at the wrong level and struggling. There's, the reasons why it could be too much. Could be, could vary. And we, we see some students that will take that same homework assignment and finish it in fifteen to twenty minutes, and then another student might. Not be able to complete it in that amount of time. So that's why it's important to, to talk to counselors. It's important to involve the teachers, but ultimately, the teacher sees the student more than any of us every single day, and I think they do know best. About how to have those conversations. What I, what I have to ask the students to do is, and it's hard because I see it in my own house, that. That sometimes students are, are shy to have those conversations with the teachers. But ultimately, our teachers are great people. I, I know all of them individually and they're willing to have those conversations with students. And I think we just have to be willing to have them.
I, I just want to reiterate, I think that it's so important for the conversations to be happening with the teachers. And, and letting this, the teachers get an idea of, is this an appropriate amount of time to be doing their homework every night? You know, and the teacher can say, this is, you know, how, how long I feel you should be working on this particular assignment. How long are you taking? And really looking at the reasons of why, whether that is a level, you know, difficulty. Or maybe, you know, just distractedness from their phone or the TV or, you know, there's a lot of different things to discuss with both the teacher and the school counselor. And I know, you know, this is a conversation we've been having for years, um, since I've been here for four years. You know, our kids have always been stressed. They're high achieving. They, you know, push themselves, which is awesome and we support, um, to a degree. And the counselors are every year having conversations with parents and students saying, what's, you know, what's the best balance, right? We have to create that balance. Um, and we want you to challenge yourself and we, you know, because you've shown that you can, but within reason. We want you to have extracurriculars. We want you to be, you know, involved in sports and having family time and getting to bed at a reasonable time. The number of times I've said to a student, you need to go to bed before midnight, pre-COVID, pre-pandemic. You know, I could, you know, make a million dollars if I had five dollars for every time I said that. So it's, you know, it's a continuous, um, conversation that has to be happening as to really getting to the root cause of the stress. Or, you know, the time management issues or whatever.
And, and Mrs. Gataletta brings up another great point that, you know, we, you know, Mr. Lancaster and I were both teachers. And sometimes as a teacher, you think that when you give an assignment, it's going to take X number of minutes to complete. And if you sometimes forget what it's like to be a sixteen or seventeen or eighteen year old. And what we might think takes X number of minutes actually takes the students much more than the X plus Y. And, and I think, but i- if students don't have those conversations with the teachers, the teachers might not know. Honestly not know that it's taking them that long to complete a task that they thought would take twenty minutes, took them an hour. And they might not be on an island with that either. Could be many students that feel that way. So the more comfortable our students get with having those conversations with the teachers, I think the more open that dialogue becomes. I think the more we're able to solve some of these concerns. I agree with everything Mrs. Gataletta says. I want our students in bed earlier. They need to be rested. And the better rested they are, the better they're going to perform academically as well.
And another interesting thing that we've seen, um, with the students is that, you know, since COVID started. But also especially since the schedule started is that their sleep, um, circadian rhythms are completely off. We have kids up until three or four every night, you know, on the computer and then they're napping in the afternoon. Um, and I think we can all attest that that's just not a great system for your mo- your mind, your body, your health. So, uh, you know, I hope personally with this more structure that they have in their day. Um, going back to a little bit more of a normal schedule, that they'll get back into the habit of getting to bed at a decent hour. Waking up in the morning for their classes and going about their day as normal.
Especially, can I just add something?
Sure, absolutely.
So, uh, first I would like to commend everyone. Thank you so much for all your hard work with another reopening, another plan, scheduling plan. Um, I have a senior, as you all know, um, and I would like to thank and commend the counselors, the principals. And all the teachers for helping. We've been constantly in contact with my son's teachers. Guidance counselor, case manager, um, regarding homework assignments missing. Um, and of course, for my child, no schedule would be good for him. He would much rather not be in school, but, um, so I thank you very much. Um, because all the work that everyone has done has been, you know, greatly appreciated. So thank you all.
Thank you, Mrs. Prisco. I'm just going to piggyback on, I love that this conversation is in front of so many people. In front of the audience and so many, um, panelists on here. Because it's, I think one of the positives that's coming out of this hybrid and this tumultuous situation. Is students are learning to advocate and own their own education. Because I think one of the biggest gifts we as parents could give our kids is the voice to speak to the teachers. Because teachers, let's face it, you're not there for the glory and the money. You're there because you love students, you love learning. You, you're passionate about what you do and you want to have these conversations with, with students. So I think, um, giving students the, the encouragement and the confidence to come and sit and discuss this. With their counselor or with their teacher is one of the most tremendous gifts and a, a great learning opportunity. Because you carry that on into life. When you go to college, nobody's handholding you. You need to advocate for yourself. And then you get into the real world and you have a boss and you have a million deadlines. And I'm sitting at a desk from, in front of a computer for twelve, fifteen hours a day. And sometimes you just have to talk to your boss and say, hey, listen, this isn't working and these are the reasons why. So I think as difficult as it is and uncomfortable, I think coming out of, um, this pandemic and hybrid situation. These kids are going to have a whole different, um, skill that they're, they're having an opportunity to practice. So I, I applaud, um, that this conversation is happening. So thank you very much. Is, is there anything else, um, for Mr. Cogdill or Ms. Gataletta or Mr. Lancaster, um, on the high school schedule? No. Um, so do we want to at this point, um, open this up for, uh, public questions on the schedule?
Yes, that would be great. I think that's an appropriate time to open it up to public.
Yeah, and then we'll do the whole middle school thing, um, in its own bubble as well. So we, we stay on track here. Okay, so let's see. Um, Mr. Roberts, are you going to please handle?
Yeah, I'll take her.
Okay, great. I see one hand.
First up is Regina French.
And let me just please remind, um, the callers to please state your name and your address for us.
Hi, Regina French, forty-four, Brookside Terrace. Um, I wanted to just get clarification on how members of the committee were chosen this, this last round when you asked for volunteers. I know I for one, uh, volunteered. I was not selected. But did I hear you say that members of the committee that were chosen were supposed to reach out to people who were not chosen? Because that did not happen.
Uh, yes, and Mrs. French, that was, they were each assigned, um, parents to reach out to. Listen, they're tasked with reaching out and going out to those people. It, it's very difficult for me to say what they did with those people. But they did bring back information. I'm hoping that they reached out to everybody that they were assigned to. How the people were selected for the committee, I gave, um, the list of, of, of everybody that volunteered to the SCA. And what I asked them was, I, I, I was looking for a diverse group that, that maybe had different opinions. And on the committee, we did. We had people who, on the committee who felt that schools should be fully open. And we had people on the committee that felt that schools really shouldn't be open and, and everything in the middle. Additionally, I want to make sure that we, we had representation for every grade level so that no one grade level was overrepresented. And I wanted to make sure that we had, um, student, uh, parents of students who, uh, of special education as well, so that they were represented. I, I didn't select any of the committee members for the parents.
Okay, and then, you know, I know, um, someone was had, they appreciated the data and how it was presented. But I feel like you have such a very small sample size. I think the data would have been a lot more meaningful had there been a larger sample size. Perhaps survey all of the parents at the high school and then you would have something meaningful. Um, especially since even people who volunteered weren't necessarily contacted. So it's a very small group of people in relation to how many people are at the school. Um, so that was my comment about that. And then I just wanted to address something this Gataletta said, um, which has been on my mind. But with the pandemic, everything else goes out the window, but we're dealing with day to day. But I just want to say about, um, students and getting enough sleep. Uh, there, you can look up the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation study. And, um, it references many studies that show that later school start time for high school and middle school students result in better grades. Higher test scores, improves focus and self-regulation. Um, and I know it's nothing we can look at right now because we're in the middle of pandemic. But, you know, perhaps someday down the road, you'll do what some other high schools have looked at and that's a later start time for high school students. And, um, you know, I, I, maybe it was an opportunity that I'd have a little bit of a later start time. Let the students follow their natural circadian rhythm as teenagers. Um, so those are just my two comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. French. Uh, is there anyone else? I don't see anybody. Okay, so now we're going to move on to the HBW reopening plan. And we have, uh, Ms. McNeil and Mr. Galbichak, uh, presenting that. So I'm going to turn that over.
Hi, everyone. Um, I'm Dave Galbichak. I'm the Carnegie House principal at HP Whitehorn. And, um, Ms. McNeil is, uh, is going to kick off our presentation.
Good evening, everybody. Happy New Year. Um, we're very happy it's, uh, twenty twenty is behind us. Um, and we're looking forward to a, a better year. So thank you all for, for coming. And, um, and we are going to present to you, um, our, with our committee to improve our hybrid schedule. First of all, we want to thank you. Um, we want to say thank you to our committee of parents and staff and administrative stakeholders. We really, uh, we had six meetings with our core, um, with our core, core team and they were fantastic. It was actually, we really had a lot of fun and we had some great discussions. And we really, we, we think we made a lot of, um. Inroads into the changes that were necessary and listening to a lot of different stakeholders. We also want to thank the ninety-plus staff members and parents in our subcommittees. Um, we, I'm sure there were probably at least fifteen meetings outside of our core meetings. And, uh, are, all of those notes were brought back to us and we discussed them. So we just want to say thank you for all of your hard work and we, we think that, um, this new schedule, um, is a nice. Combination of what, of the data is telling us that we needed to do. This was our purpose. We need to evaluate our hybrid schedule, identify its strengths, look, look at its weaknesses. And make sure that we were adjusting the schedule, but we wanted to make sure that we were still staying within. The health guidelines. This is our current schedule, current hybrid schedule. And if you see, we have, um, a jam-packed morning, seven classes, uh, for three minutes of passing time. Thirty-six minutes of class and, um. Uh, you can see students rushing in the building, um, barely any time, uh, for our students to pass. To a different class, wipe down their desks or even students at home to get a drink of water, take a break. And we had office hours in the afternoon. And I would say that we, we did have a consistent group of students who were showing up and, and definitely need our office hours. But it, you know, I would say that we had a lot of students who weren't taking advantage of those office hours. So we wanted to add some more structure to our afternoons. So our task was first of all, to reduce the number of cohorts. We currently have four. Um, and we wanted to, you know, our parents were adamant about getting students in more. We looked at the data and, um, we were looking at how many could we do a two? Could we, could we get, you know, a, a cohort and a B cohort or could we get a three cohort? Uh, the other thing we were asked to do was slow down the pace of the instructional day. While providing an, uh, structure in the afternoons. These were our non-negotiables. So, uh, at the beginning of our, our core committee meeting. We made sure that everybody knew that, you know, these are the things we, we had to work around. So we couldn't do full days for in-person stu- student cohorts. Because we are not, um, for safety reasons, we're not providing lunch. And it's not safe for our students to, um, have lunch in school at this time at, in such great numbers. AMPM cohorts, um, came up and it was very difficult to, um. Find out whether or not, you know, it was, we have trouble getting crossing guards now, um, during COVID. So finding crossing guards for force shifts for all of the stations would be, uh. Almost impossible, which would be a definite safety hazard. And also we wanted to make sure in turn, in looking at our cohort numbers, we have to make sure that we are always maintaining six feet of social distancing. Our building is, is old and we have so many different sizes of rooms. That, um, we have to take in consideration, um, a lot of different things when we space out our rooms. So we have a, you know, a music room that could probably hold fifteen and we have small group instruction rooms, which could probably hold four or five. So, um, that's the kind of, um, issues we are looking at when we look at, looking at cohorts. Um, and changing the cohorts. And this was our committee work. We reviewed the non-negotiables. We evaluated the schedule. We reviewed, we sent out a, um, a teacher and parent survey in early November. We asked parents how, um, the hybrid schedule was going. We got data from that. And then we also, uh, surveyed parents at the end of November in terms of, um, condensing cohorts. So the questions were, would you, uh, can, would you, um, give up? Well, we'll talk about that later, but it was really, you know, would you, um, send your child if there were two cohorts? Would you send your child if there were three? And then there were some caveats to that and we'll show you the, um. The results of that data. Okay.
So, thank you, Ms. McNeil. So I'm going to take a moment to talk about the feedback that we received. Then that came in the form of surveys like Ms. McNeil mentioned, uh, as well as our, our core committees. And also those, those subcommittees of, of parents and staff members. You know, one of the surveys that I'll speak to is one that went out to all parents in, in early November. This is shortly after we had gone from, um, shifted to the stage where we had in-person instruction. And the overwhelming feedback again was that students need to be in school more quickly. Do you mind just going back to that?
Sorry.
So we, we asked a question on the survey, um, for those parents who have siblings, uh, multiple children in the middle school. How important is it to you that your children, um, have this, go to school under the same cohort? Because that's the model we have now. And the response was split about fifty-fifty. Yes, half the parents said it was important, half said it wasn't. We followed up with a question, um, what's more important, having your child come to school under the same, um, on the same day or be in that same cohort? Or come into school more often? And it was almost one hundred percent response. Get my child into school more often, um, rather than have them in, in the same cohort. Uh, so that was information that we had shared with our committee. Some of the feedback also longer, like Ms. McNeil said, our current schedule. According to that survey that we sent out in, in early November, when we shifted from, uh, one schedule to the, the one we currently have. Was that the, the, the day was too frenetic. I think frenetic is a word that kept coming up. Um, that we need more breaks during the day and that we need more structure in the afternoon. Because right now our day ends at one oh five. We go eight straight, eight thirty to one oh five. And then, um, you know, we have office hours from two thirty to three thirty. But like Ms. McNeil said, that time is being utilized by, um, by a group of students. Um, and, and it's very important to a group of students, but, um, a majority of the students aren't really using it. And so parents, um, especially the parents, the feedback was that we need to struct- provide more structure to the afternoon. While increasing instructional time, the thought was, you know, the day thirty-six minute classes were too short. And then also, um, try to make sure we're focusing on mental health enrichment, et cetera. So, um, I think it was, it was Ms. Prisco who alluded to after the high school presentation, there is no perfect schedule. And so we had all this in mind. And this is, you know, what we went back and forth with. with the committee. So if you could go to the next slide. So as a group, we, we, the, the parents on the, the committee said, listen, we, we want fewer cohorts. You guys as the educators are the experts in, in your building, the nuances of the schedule. And so they asked for us educators to come up with some different scheduling ideas and then we could present it back to the group. And so that's what we did. We had a couple set, we had two separate meetings with the staff members on the committee and we, we hadn't had staff members develop and propose different ideas, different scheduling frameworks. And we kicked that around. We ultimately made, you know, presented some different options to, in varieties to the, the full committee. And then from there, we had the full committee report back to their subcommittees again of there are up to 80 parent, about 70 parents who are the, who are invited to participate on the subcommittees and all of our staff members were invited to participate on the, the staff subcommittees. And, you know, and kick around different, their, their feedback and thoughts and debate the code, the pros and cons. And share that their, their thoughts with Ms. McNeil and I. And we also talked a little bit about cohort options, meaning should students go in, like right now, we're in an A, B, C, D. Should we maintain that or should kids come in two days at a time or a week at a time? So that was, you know, something else that we had discussed. So, you know, with all that in mind and everything we had to weigh, we had some, some decisions to make. And, you know, just, you know, if you could go to the, to the next slide for me, please. We are excited to announce that we will be going from four cohorts. You know, we, the data supports that. The data unfortunately does not support a shift from four to two cohorts at this time. Like Ms. McNeil said, we have, you know, we, we have a funky building in terms of the, the size of some of the classrooms. Every teacher who has shares classrooms or there's not a single, you know, I don't think there's a single teacher, you know, in the gen ed setting who has his or her own classroom throughout the day. And so there's a lot of, of sharing and class sizes vary. You know, but we are confident that with the, while with, we can shift to three cohorts, but we will not keep necessarily keep siblings together. So that's what, how we'll be able to, to get that done. We, the committee did debate, like I said before, you know, the best way to rotate and the majority in the committee said that an ABC rotation was better than an AA, BBBCC option or a week one, week two, week three option. The, the rationale being that, well, we have unanticipated school closures, whether it be due to weather or health concerns. It's just best to keep kids coming in as, as we can. That being said, keep this, keep the cohort dates firm and don't change them. We recognize that this could lead to an imbalance in the number of in-person days for certain cohort groups, but you know, it's committee, you know, the communicated to us that it's best to keep the dates firm. And, and that way everyone knows what the schedule is. And then we can make adjustments down the line as necessary. Again, so that's, so that's one action item that will be coming out of this committee work and I'll get to the timeline in a few moments, but before I get to the next slide, again, I want to reiterate that there is no perfect schedule. This is my sixth year at HB and prior to the pandemic, we've talked about schedule changes and you know, in a, in a, those times in the times pre-pandemic, it was really difficult to come up with, you know, changes to the schedule that might make sense that make everyone happy. You know, but that being said, I think we've come up with a schedule that will, that does accommodate the various perspectives that we are presented. So if you could shift to slide 11. So this is a look at where the schedule we will be going to in a few weeks. And if I could walk you through it, there are some similarities to the high school schedule and there are similar similarities between the schedule and the schedule we ran in September and October, when students were, were, were virtual. Back in September and October, students were scheduled for classes from 8:30 until 3 o'clock. They had a 45 minute lunch break and they had 10 minutes break in between classes. We created a schedule where students will, they'll start at 8:30. That's, that's been a consistent throughout this school year. Periods will be 40 minutes long. With the exception of first period, which is we add two minutes for homeroom. But so we're going to go from what we now have 36 minute periods will go from 36 to 40 in normal times. We're at 45 minute class periods. We will have five classes during the morning and then we will also break for lunch at 12 12. And we have a 73 minute break during the day, which, at which time students that are in person can go home. That's time for lunch. It's independent time. It's get outside and play time. It's, it's homework time, whatever this, you know, child chooses to do. And then all students will log back on remotely beginning at 1:25 for their last two classes. The last class of the day will end at 2:50 and then beginning at 3 o'clock until 3:30, teachers will be available for office time. There will also be our clubs. We have a number of clubs that are taking place virtually. And, you know, so those will be going, starting at 3 o'clock. Now you'll notice that for the first time, the middle school schedule will have a rotation to it. And while that might seem confusing and, and there will be a learning curve for our students, we recognize that, but the reason for, really it's twofold. One is, one is, I think, we think it's exciting to, to have your day not be the same every single day. And you know, adds a little flavor to the day, starting different classes at different times of the day. But for the in, the students going to school in person. If we just had the same static get scheduled, then they would only see those same classes, say periods one through five in person and then, and never see their, their period six and seven teacher or classes in person. And so that's why we are rotating. Our teachers, I'm confident and that we've already talked to them about, you know, some of our teacher teams about this. We'll do, you know, they're going to do their best to communicate to students. All right. Today's, you know, tomorrow's a day B, you're going to start with period three. You know, all right, after lunch, you're going to be returning. It's good. You're going to go to your period one class. The teachers are going to do a great job with that. We will provide students with schedules and grids and then so that they'll, they, they'll be able to refer to, to those items and know, you know, when they need to log on. And I assure you that kids adjust way better than we adults do. But we adults will be there to support them and guide them in the right direction. Under this schedule, band and chorus will take place during the zero period, which is, you know, what, when they would be meeting during normal times. We thought it was important to talk in consultation with Mr. Miklaski, Mr. Halpern. And Ms. Hamilton, they, they felt like it was important to, you know, to, to not take away that time in the middle of the day or after school. You know, should they have decided to hold rehearsals and lessons during the middle of the day or after school? Yeah, that, that might be unfair to them and that they would probably have the best focus during that period zero, which is what they, when they meet during, during typical times. So again, we recognize that, you know, while there are no perfect schedules, we feel like we've incorporated a lot of the elements that have been recommended by the committee to us in the schedule with again, a, we've increased the number of minutes between classes from three to five. We didn't want to go much above that because for students that are in the building. You know, we don't want to, to slow them down, but you know, big, big chunk of time in the middle of the day to, so that the pace of the day slows down and kids can catch their breath and, and kind of do what they choose. But then provide some structure to the afternoon and we feel like we did that by just scheduling our day in this way. So if you could send, I think a lot of what I said will be on the next slide, but I just wanted to make sure that everyone had, had that visual, the schedule up instead of reading all these words on this slide, which essentially reiterates what I said, the schedule does retain office hours. We did go, we'll go from 60 to 30 minutes of office hours. Again, there is a, an important use of the, that office time for our students who are in need of additional support and help. This schedule will be fluid. It's a schedule we can use both when we are in person and when, you know, when the decision is made is to, to be all remote. This schedule can work for, for, you know, at all times. Couple of changes pertaining to special education, the self-contained classes and program for out the LSS and LD classes. Those students will be leaving at 12 12 with the rest of the student body and they will rejoin their classes with the rest of the student body beginning at 1:25. Currently, students who have resource room for either English or math, they are in, because we're in four cohorts, they, we've scheduled it so that they are coming in two of the four days. We are, we strongly anticipate that students who have both English and math resource room will be able to come in two out of the three days under our plan, under, based on the numbers that we currently have. Should something change because, and we'll talk about that in a moment, but you know, should, should something change in terms of the number of students who all of a sudden decide they no longer want to be remote and want to be in person? You know, that, that could change that, but we don't anticipate any change at this time. And so if you, yeah, because move on to the next slide. The, the idea and concept of enrichment, mental health, screen time, that was at the forefront of our decision, balancing the academic needs of students with the social and emotional needs of students. And we are encouraging our, see, Ms. McNeil are encouraging our teachers to use regular class periods on, on enrichment or socially engaging activities. We are fine. If a teacher or a grade level or a team of teachers think, you know what, these kids have had rough, you know, couple of days, we've just gotten through a major project assignment. We're going to do something totally off the grid that has nothing to do with math or science or social studies or literacy today and do something fun and engaging and enriching and, and we're fine with that. You know, we recognize that in normal, that the social outlets and physical outlets that kids normally have are diminished right now. And so we're going to encourage student or our staff members to, to provide students with those opportunities. We, our fifth and sixth grade gen ed students are already enrolled in a core enrichment class. And so these classes in particular will be focused on additional enrichment activities that, you know, are not directly tied to their, their class graded curriculum, but to, to further use, may focus on using these lessons for, for enrichment purposes. Couple of years ago, we, with, under the PBSIS model, HBW incorporated owl days. These are, these were fun days for kids. We had assemblies where, where kids did a lot of contests and games, but we also had social emotional learning activities that went on. And we'd like to plan these kinds of days, of course, in a, in a socially distant way. But to, to have owl days once a month at a minimum, that's at least the goal. So that again, is another way to not just be solely focused on, on the, the curriculum, but also on students' social emotional wellbeing. Our counselors will be pushing into seventh and eighth grade classes because those classes don't have the, the core enrichment class, but, but they are, they'll be pushing into seventh and eighth grade classes. You know, so that they can, can lend social and emotional learning to experiences to students. And then I alluded to before, club participation, we have, I think we have close to, 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 two dozen clubs. They're not all operating at the same time. But many of them will be running and we're going to try to find ways to encourage those outlets for students. So you know, a lot went into the development of this schedule and, and the idea of, you know, how to structure the afternoon. You know, we, we did put classes in the afternoon. But we're, we're really going to encourage our teachers and to come up with ways to make sure that whether it be through, directly through their curriculum or, or rely on their expertise to, to make sure that they're ultimately connecting with kids and making sure that our kids stay engaged with us. So if you could go off to the next slide. So when, when are we going to do all this? So hopefully tomorrow, yeah, we have some details to finalize, but our goal is to send a detailed message in an email to parents tomorrow that, that outlines the schedule, outlines the cohort updates. And then we need to have parents let us know what their intentions are. Do they intend to send their, their child back to school or not? We want to get this going as soon as possible. At this time, our goal is to, to start both on, in three weeks on January 25th. Yeah, that's our goal is to start with the three cohorts and with the new schedule. This will allow families' time and staff members' time to adjust to, to the new schedule. It also will allow Ms. McNeil and I to gather the intent to return surveys. We anticipate, yeah, we're not, you know, I don't think anyone's ever gotten 100% feedback in a survey. You know, with, when you have, you know, over 500 families. And so, you know, we'll have, we'll be following up the families that don't respond. With the, when we go to this, the shift to three cohorts, it's important to note that this is, we're going to ask, you know, that the parents are making this decision for January 25th through March 26th. March 26th is the Friday before our spring break. And we felt like that was a natural dividing point and, you know, but we need that, that, that commitment from parents. Because we can't have students coming in and out. Otherwise it's impossible to, to balance cohorts in the classes, classrooms as evenly as possible and as safely as possible. So so again, we're going to send these surveys out. We'll follow up with families that don't respond. And then once we get that feedback, I alluded to the special education families with those students who have only one, we call them single replacement, either resource room for, for either math or literacy. Our goal is to get those students also in two out of three cohorts. We will see if that's possible to do that. But you know, again, we need the, the time, the, the, we need the survey results to figure out exactly how many students will be remote versus how many will be hybrid. And we'll have to make some adjustments, adjustments in Genesis and communicate cohorts ultimately to, to families. Our committee will be meeting periodically over the next several months, just to just, it's important for Ms. Neil and I to, to hear from the, the staff members and the parents who volunteered to participate on the committee. Like she said, it was, there was a lot of really good back and forth and it felt like a strong partnership. And, you know, we're, we're looking forward to the opportunity to continue in the conversation with this group over the next several months. So that's essentially our presentation. So Ms. Neil, I will turn it over to the board members for any questions they may have.
Thank you very much, Ms. McNeil, Mr. Galba check. Do any of the board members have any questions on this presentation?
Yeah, I appreciate the presentation. Thank you very much. Regarding the clubs, I know something that you brought up. I know you're trying to find, Mr. Galbert, you mentioned the clubs and trying to find time to do it. Would you, I saw on the schedule, you had mentioned doing it like 3 o'clock. Would you also try to do that midday, you know, in that hour and 20, with that window you have for, I know it's for lunch, but maybe you squeeze in 15, 20 minutes for, you know, a club to meet, something like that. Is that something you thought about?
Yeah. Oh, absolutely. Yeah, oh, absolutely. That is an option. We would want to, you know, it depends on the club and the advisor, but I, I would imagine they would do that closer to, you know, closer to, you know, twelve forty-five or one o'clock. That would allow students to, that are in person to go home and, and have lunch and then log on. But I think that, that could definitely work for some of those clubs and that is something that we bounced around. And that was one of the, the thoughts in having such, you know, like the high school has in a normal times during their every day, they could hold clubs during lunch. We had that same thought in developing this. We also, you know, had kicked around the idea of ban, but the, the music, the director said, no, that's really not, that would not work for us to have ban during the middle of the day.
Okay, well, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Do any other board members have questions? No, I, I think it was a great presentation as well. Thank you. And again, the amount of moving parts to all of this and, you know, all the teachers, administrators, you know, community members that are all participating in trying to get the best form. I appreciate the work that's going in. It's, it's, it's admirable. And now we will open up for middle school questions and comments to the public. And Dan, Mr. Roberts, I'm going to ask you to please do that. I see a couple of hands that just popped up.
All right, so first is Robert Robotham.
And I'm going to again, remind people to please state your name and your address.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Robert Robotham, two sixty Grove Avenue, obviously in Verona. And I, I hope it's not a silly question. I know the, the diagram went up quickly and moved on. I just want to clarify to make sure I saw it correctly. That the children who are in the self-contained classrooms with the more severe and serious special ed needs, am I correct that I saw that they're the ones actually having their in-school time lowered? Under this plan? The children that were in the self-contained rooms all day?
So, so at this time, yes, you know, it's something that, that we're going to continue looking at and, and not saying there won't be any, you know, adjustments to it. But the idea of such a long lunch period and then the, the staff members won't be in the building for the afternoon cycle classes. So there might be some days, you know, on the presentation, there were, you know, four different days, A, B, C, D day. There might be some days where it might be possible for those students to stay in the afternoon. You know, that's something that, you know, special services and, and HBW administration are continuing to, to look at.
So, so I'm correct, but as of now, the children who got these services all day are, are leaving at regular time with everyone else and will not be there for the afternoon?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Now, just to comment to Mr. Robotham in regards to that, due to the fact that we have a rotation and many of our self-contained students do get pushed out into some of our regular educate, general education classrooms for some of their periods. With us going through this rotation, it would be beneficial for them to be at home and engage them virtually as opposed to being in school and not having that instructor in the building. So it's really because of the extended middle of the day period. And it's also really because of the rotation of the afternoon. Those students may be pushed down into general education classes at that time where they would have to then engage virtually anyway. You know, it is a small population. You know, our seventh and eighth grade LLD teacher has shared that those students in that classroom, in the LLD classroom, really are more in tune to wanting to go home at twelve twelve with everybody else. So we were taking their mental health also into consideration with that. Obviously, our fifth and sixth graders, you know, those students who are in those LLD classrooms were getting extra instruction, but that extra instruction was not driven by any periods in the day. That was just a special ed teacher working on reinforcement skills. Now that we're extending the day, putting periods in the day where students may be put into the general education setting or also working with their special education teacher, we needed to have them go home. In addition, it was an additional half hour of supervision for lunch and recess. It was difficult enough trying to keep these children, especially during the winter months, occupied for the forty-five minute lunch and recess that we were giving them. Now that we're giving close to, you know, a twenty-eight minutes more than the forty-five, I think seventy-three minutes is what Mr. Galbachek said. That would be difficult to fill that time for those students.
Next is Marie Zemecol.
Ms. Zemecol? Hello, Corinne Zemecol, eighty-eight Fairview Avenue. My child is not in a self-contained room, but I think I echo the same, that the replacement kids, I think, also will get less in-school time if I understood it right. I'm not sure I understood it completely right for children to get two replacements or more, but it looked like they might have less in-school time as well. But I may be mistaken, that was, I was a little bit confused.
So students at HB who have both the resource room math and literacy, we anticipate that we will be able to schedule those students for two of the three cohorts as opposed to the two out of four cohorts that we currently have. For students who have either math or literacy resource room, you know, right now they'd be scheduled for one of the three cohorts, but once we get the intent to return survey feedback, our goal and our wish is to be able to schedule those students also for two out of three cohorts. We just, it's not clear right now. We, we've run the numbers based on, we have a, a test account that we use in, in our, our student services system. It's just not clear right now. I don't want to definitively say we can do it, but that's certainly our goal. But again, we just have to wait and get the intent to return survey data from our, our parents to know exactly what our class sizes look so that we, to see if we can schedule in a safe way, you know, these additional students.
Okay, thank you. Can, can I also add that because we're going to three cohorts? Every two weeks, students are coming in twice a week and only once the third week. So they still are coming in twice a week for two out of the three weeks.
Uh, there's no further callers.
Thank you. And again, thank you to the presenters. It was very, very well presented. And to all the callers, I hope, you know, that everybody settles into the new schedule. And as your students start to get into the schedule and get back, the best place, I think, to start, if there's questions, are with the teachers and the building principals to iron out, you know, because that's who knows best what's going on in each building and with each cohort. So with that, if there's no more comments or questions from the board, we're going to move on with our regular agenda. Committee port, reports are up next. And I don't believe anybody that there were any committee meetings over the holiday, correct? Okay, so nobody met. So we are going to move on. And now we're going to open again to public comments that are on agenda items for the resolutions to be voted upon tonight. So if there are any public questions or comments on our agenda items, now would be the time to raise your hand. I don't see anybody.
I see none.
Okay, so we will move on with that. And next on our agenda are discussion items for the board. So the only two things that I wanted to bring up were at our last meeting, we had mentioned that Ms. Drapi and I had met with Mr. Vince DeLucia from New Jersey School Boards Association and started discussing having him come to present at a board meeting about inherent biases and diversity. And we were able to iron out with his schedule and we've invited him to come to our February ninth meeting. So he will be the top of our agenda. It's about a one-hour presentation and he very much made a point of saying he welcomes input and questions and comments from the community. So I'm really looking forward to having him on the ninth. And the other thing I just wanted to update is that the, we had reported out that the Board of Ed was trying to meet with the VEA to address the vote of no confidence. And we did engage with the mediator and I'm very happy to report, we did have our first meeting with the mediator on December fifteenth. So that's ongoing. So we're making some good progress there. So that's a happy report. And I don't have any other discussion items. Do any of the board members have anything that they need to comment on or add?
Um, I have just a couple of comments, Ms. Freski. First, I want to thank the group Verona Together. They're a group of incredibly hardworking volunteers who have taken on a really significant role in our community. They started as assisting the local restaurants in the community and trying to get the word out to help support them. And most recently, they worked with Verona alumni Scott Chesney to organize the left, the Let's Lift Connor event, which was a huge success. And it was just wonderful to see so many community members coming together, just like we've done, you know, thus far in our ongoing committees with reopening school. And I think, you know, we've said this before and I'll continue to say it again, is that that's why we live in Verona. You know, we work so well together and we always have the best outcomes when we are able to pull together and make things happen. I also want to thank Barbara Wertz at Forest and Norma Palmer from HBW, our nurses. They were in an article this week, my Verona, regarding their volunteerism with COVID vaccinations through the county. And I just think that is so wonderful and I think they deserve a shout out. So on top of all the insanity that they are dealing with on a daily basis, I mean, nurses are really the glue that are holding every building together right now. They went above and beyond. And so thank you to them. And that's it.
Great, thank you. Does anybody else have anything?
Yeah, I just had something to add in regards to winter sports. And since I will now be, I guess after we vote today, I will no longer be on the athletic committee. So it's been, uh, it's been fun working Mr. Merkler and Mrs. Prisco on that. And I know Mr. Mr. Merkler's on the line right now. So, um, Mr. Merkler, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I just want to let, let you know that right now, winter sports is moving forward. Happy to say we haven't earned anything from the state or from, you know, the folks that run the sports in, in the state to, to shut it down yet. So there is a little bit of concern that, you know, they, they could shut it down at any time. But the good news is right now our hockey players are on the ice. We, we did, you know, being cost-conscious and understanding the other district are doing it, we did provide the VEA a resolution that would allow us to, in case of a state shutdown, prorate this, the coaches so we'd make sure they get paid, but paid for, say, the season shutdown in the middle of the season, we would prorate that, you know, salary. We had presented that resolution, a similar resolution that other districts had passed. The VEA decided against that, discussing that at this time. So what we did, we voted as a board to, for the hockey coaches to get those practices started. Then tonight we'll be voting in the addendum for the basketball coaches and the cheerleaders, Mr. Merkler, I believe that's correct. And so basketball is supposed to start on January eleventh. So that's, that's coming sooner than later. So very excited to hopefully get the basketball season kicked off. And if all goes well, then we'll, you know, two, on two-one, we're going to be voting for the swim coach. And then everything's moving forward at that point. We'll move forward with the coaches for wrestling and volleyball. Mr. Merkler, anything else to add to that? Any other sports that I missed or anything else you want to clarify on that?
No, we're, we're looking forward to getting up and running. You know, hockey started up yesterday, so that was nice to, you know, just, we've had a little bit of a break since the, since around Thanksgiving. So to see the kids on the ice is a great thing. And, you know, as basketball gets started up on Monday, I know those kids are excited, seeing what our cheerleaders, and then, you know, we're going to continue to provide opportunities for our kids to be out there. And, you know, we're looking forward to getting the seasons going. I know the kids are, are, you know, very excited to do so as well.
Very good. Thanks, Mr. Merkler. That's my report, Lisa.
Great, well, thank you. Excellent. So if there's nothing else, at this point, we are, I need a motion to accept resolutions number one through ten.
So moves.
Moved by Mr. Day.
Second.
And second by Ms. Prisco. Is there any discussion on those resolutions before we move to vote? If no, I'm going to ask Mr. Turner to do the roll call to vote on those resolutions.
Mr. Allworth.
Yes.
Mrs. Drapi.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco.
Yes.
And Mrs. Freshy.
Yes.
Motion, pass.
Excellent, thank you. And then we also have addendum resolutions. So I need a motion to accept addendum resolutions number one through four.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Day. Second by Ms. Drapi. Okay. And are there any discussions on those? If not, I am going to ask Mr. Turner to please do the roll call.
Mr. Allworth.
Yes.
Mrs. Drapi. All right, Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco.
Yes.
And Mrs. Freshy.
Yes.
Motion, pass.
Excellent, thank you, everybody. And at this point, we are going to open up to public comments on any topics. And it, there is a five-minute limit per caller. And please again, state your name and your address. Mr. Roberts, will you do the honors?
First up is Lynn Halsey.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Lynn.
Hi. Happy holidays, everyone. Welcome back. And I just wanted to ask if there had been any discussion so far with the Montclair Health Department in regards to vaccinations? And considering the fact that children are not yet included or not yet approved to receive them, has there been any discussion in terms of how teacher vaccinations, hopefully that comes quickly, you know, will that impact our future plans for restrictions? Or do we assume that we're pretty dependent on children being included in the vaccination plan going forward? I was just wondering if that was a part of the discussion so far.
Thank you, Mrs. Halsey.
Thank you.
Dr. Zaneseal, do you want to address that?
Sure. I, I had a meeting with the Essex County Association of Superintendents in December with the county superintendent's office. It was our regular monthly roundtable meeting and one of the areas that we did talk about wasn't the anticipation of information on vaccinations and the distribution of it. At that time, none of the districts had received any concrete information. And this was about mid-December in regards to the rollout. I have not yet had any, received any information from the health department. I do know that the vaccinations right now are reserved for our frontline healthcare workers. I know that Mr. Merkler is on this call. I'm not sure if he's received any information. He's been working very closely, very closely with the Montclair Health Department. So, Mr. Merkler, have you received anything on that?
I spoke with them yesterday. I had a call regarding something a little bit different, but all they provided to me was that the vaccination portal is open for, you know, fees, I think it's called phase one A, workers, which are frontline workers. And I know our nurses are working right now who, and they're both helping it get vaccinated or helping vaccinate people and they are getting vaccinated as well. But that was the extent of that conversation.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Jackie Frick.
Hi, thank you, Jackie Fricki, sixty-five Grove Avenue. Thanks for your time. I have two second graders and a first grader at FM Brown. And I want to thank the elementary committee for the work that they're doing to improve the elementary experience. And as I try too often, I want to thank the teachers, specifically my kids' teachers, for the tremendous job that they do every day. And as I try too often, I want to thank the teachers, specifically my kids' teachers, for the tremendous job that they do every day. As I wait to hear the updates for those elementary committees, I know they're forthcoming. I'm, I'm aware that what I'm waiting on is an improvement, you know, any improvement on the current hybrid model. Excuse me, where my kids are in school two half days per week. And so today I looked at the very comprehensive deck that the district presented in August because I wanted, really just needed to understand kind of what the end game is. And I realized that there's no specific data or criteria outlined that I could find that defines what would eventually enable us to move to stage four. So the bullets listed that I saw for stage four list, health and safety of staff and students must be assured. I'm not sure and I can't find any detail on what specifically that means. And then the second states return to traditional schedule when public health conditions improve. And again, I'm not certain and I can't find any detail on what specifically that means. So certainly not trying to get ahead of myself. I know we're still in the midst of a pandemic. I know there's still a lot of uncertainty. I definitely do not want to distract from the very important work being done by the elementary committees because it's absolutely critical that we get these kids in school more and soon. What I am hoping is that concurrently, the district is working on eventually getting to stage four and defining what gets us there. So my questions are, number one, what specific and quantifiable criteria would provide assurance of health and safety for the staff and students? And number two, what specific and quantifiable improvements in public health conditions need to be achieved to move to stage four? So I think as parents, as employees, just by human nature, we need milestones, however lofty they may be, to look toward so that we know what it is that we're working toward. And in this case, so, so we can manage our kids' expectations, our employer's expectations and our own. So I personally look forward to seeing what the, those criteria are. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Fricky. Dr. D'Oneseo, do you want to comment on that?
Sure. As we've mentioned repeatedly on numerous occasions, the, obviously, as we're all dealing with this pandemic, it's being driven by the fact of how it's, the contagion is spread. And the safety and wellbeing of our students and our staff is the number one priority. I know that we are all committed to increasing the amount of instructional time in person, wherever we have those opportunities. I believe we saw examples of how that is being accomplished at the high school and at the middle school with the presentations this evening by our principals and administrators and the amazing work and the feedback from the parents and teachers and, and the students in participating in that process. But the reality is, is we are still dealing with a very serious pandemic. And we're in the midst of an opportunity, a time now where the numbers are rising. There are more cases that are popping up and the contagion is spreading. And we're optimistic that the vaccine is going to bring hope for us to be able to transition back. But we're looking at a time right now where, I believe it's two thirds of the public school, public schools in the county are closed and fully remote. And that's not taking into consideration a cautionary pause and shifting to remote after this holiday break, which many school districts have done. So as far as looking at the quantifiable data and the criteria, we're still being driven by the fact that the masks and the six feet of social distancing are the big drivers. And that's driving the current schedule. And in going from stage three to stage four, it's going to really hinge on what the next, you know, coming weeks and months looks like as far as the incidence rate with the transmission and also what impact the vaccine will have if it's able to effectively be distributed and administered to our students and staff. So we wish we had more information, but for the foreseeable future, we don't see that changing right now until we have more information.
Thank you, Dr. D'Oneseo. And just following on the news with the new strain of the virus. It's in several countries. It's spreading faster. So I think it's, it's still a very unpredictable time, time period that we're in. So I think we all need to continue to be flexible and have grace.
I will also, Mrs. Freski, add one other thing, you know, as we're talking about the elementary committees. And Mrs. Fricky had referenced this. We talked about it in our last meeting in December. The elementary committees, because of the nature of having four schools and more involvement as far as there, you know, four different neighborhood schools and a lot of stakeholders involved in those conversations. And also that the elementary schools were able to start the school year off with two cohorts rather than three or four. They are already at a point where they had maximized to a great deal, a lot of instructional time in the modeled schedule that they put forth from the committee work over last summer. So I do know that there's been a lot of really great conversation with the administrators, with the principals, with our parents and with our teaching staff. And they're making progress. They have more follow up to do this week and next week with our, our teachers and our parents. So we await some of the recommendations that they will have moving forward and we hope to have an update at our next Board of Ed meeting.
Thank you. I think we have another caller.
Mike Dupree, you're up.
Good evening, Mike Dupree, 47 Cypress Avenue. First of all, thanks to the administrators who presented the high school and middle school plans. It's awesome to see the progress come, come out of the, you know, the, the community response and, and to see, you know, different parties working together to try to, you know, make steps forward amidst all that's going on. I think it's, it's encouraging to see. Hopefully we can replicate it at the elementary level in some form or fashion. Being a part of those committees and close to it, yes, it's ongoing. The four schools and the additional stakeholders does sort of prolong the process a bit. And, and it's been, it's been diligent and we're hoping to, to, to have more information in the, in the coming weeks, come out of it. My comment was going to be specifically around the FM Brown closure in December. But before I get to that, just to, I guess, a response to Dr. D'Oneseo's comment about where elementary school started. While, while, yes, the elementary students did get to start a bit earlier than initially planned, which is tremendous and had a bit more of a robust schedule to start with, given the two cohort system because of the four schools. I just, you know, we are not, for the, for the folks listening, we're not considering that as, as good enough yet. From a parent committee standpoint, there's still a, 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 a big, a big push to find near term solutions, but also, you know, solutions further on in the spring. I mean, elementary school, middle school and high school are all very different and, and the risks are, are different for staff and students at each of those levels. And I think it's all, it's all relative. So to say that elementary came in with a better setup, therefore there, there could be less movement. You know, I, I, I think it's a bit of an apples to oranges comparison. Question specifically to the FNB closure in December. And, you know, totally respect the, the precautionary measures we have to take as we are still kind of in this winter peak. And I think just wanted to ask a question more to clarify for, for a lot of the parents who are, who are confused during that time period from the FNB schools. It appeared from the, from the superintendent's email that there were two, two known cases at, at that time. It wasn't clear if it was a staff member or student. I understand certain things can and can't be shared. Either way, I, I think the question arose in a lot of conversations within committees around if we are cohorting, if we have masks on and we are socially distancing, which is the reason we are in the kind of the structures, the hybrid structure that we're in now. What prompted the entire school to close versus maybe a classroom, a class or grade? Given that you couldn't really call any close contacts since we are following all those protocols. So it's more of just a question out of curiosity and clarification, not, not a, you know, referendum on the, on the decision. I just think people were sort of confused. If we're doing all these things and we're doing them well, which I think we have been and credit to the teachers and the principals for, for helping with that. You know, what, what prompted the entire school closure versus just a portion of it? So that's my question. And thanks again to everyone for the presentations tonight. It's really awesome to see the progress.
Thank you, Mrs. Dupree. Dr. D'Oneseo, do you want to address that?
So the question, if a parent or community member has a question like the one that Mr. Dupree conveyed, that's a fair question for someone to have based on circumstances without having the insight and perspective that we have from our seat here confidentially, that the public is, is not privy to. And the reality is, is that based on every single instance that we have, when there is a positive case that's reported and that we identify that individual has been in one of our schools. Mr. Merkler and I, along with any other relevant administrators, nurses, have conversations around the nuances of those cases. And we have conversations with the health professionals at the Montclair Health Department. And we take their guidance and we examine each situation on a case by case. And there's information that is shared with us. And the decision was ultimately made upon the guidance and the recommendation from the Montclair Health Department for this FM Brown closure. And it's out of an abundance of caution based on the unique circumstances involved. And yes, it's two cases within a 14 day window. Sometimes it's much closer than those 14 days, but then there are a lot of other variables that are involved. So for as, as much as I would love to be able to allay the concerns and the questions within the community around the, those circumstances, I'm just not able to do so based on the confidentiality of it. And, you know, I know that our community will trust that the decisions are being made in an effort to make sure that the safety and wellbeing of our students and staff is the number one priority.
Thank you very much, Dr. D'Oneseo.
Okay, next up is Chris P.
Yeah, how you doing, Chris? Pasquaulico, 275 Linden Ave, Verona.
Chris, can you, I'm sorry, can you please spell your last name for our note taker?
P A S. Yeah, it's P A S Q U A L I C H I O.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
So in regards to the last question and response, if the information was available to the school board and all the representatives and you had an abundance of information that the public can't know for, you know, privacy reasons, why is it being told to parents Sunday night after six o'clock where, you know, where you're in a family, both me and my wife work. And at six o'clock on a Sunday night, we have to figure out how we're going to handle one of us being home to provide care and making sure our, our son is getting his education in front of the screen. Is, is there, is it any way possible to give more of a lead time on these sudden closures? If you know about the information prior to Sunday night at six o'clock? Thank you.
Thank you. I, I really believe that, one, the board is not privy to all the information, the confidential information is confidential from us as well. So we do not have the full information. And I believe Dr. D'Oneseo and the staff, they are going nonstop with the health department and the people. It doesn't matter if it's a Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So as soon as they have the information that they're able to make that call, they make the call at the earliest time that they have the full information. So as inconvenient as a Sunday night was, that was the earliest time. So I really, they do, they do put, push the information out as soon as they have it. So I, you know, it is an inconvenience and I understand that frustration. But the situation is such that it is what it is. That's a terrible phrase, but it is what it is.
I, I show no further callers.
I show no further callers either. So with that, I think Mrs. Drapi wanted to make a correction.
I, I do. So I, when I mentioned before about Verona Together and the wonderful work that they do and that they've always done, I misspoke a little bit. So there's Verona Strong and then there's Verona Together. So, I mean, like, is it, it's, it's a wonderful thing to be able to confuse two incredibly volunteer, incredibly run volunteer organizations in our town. But yes, we are lucky enough to have them. Verona Together has been around for a while, but they did something pretty incredible this year. They had a spiritware, ware sale where they raised $1,200 and donated it to the Conference of SCAs. And, you know, as most of us know, that the SCAs are some of the driving force behind, you know, getting our teachers and students, those extras that are so important to making school a truly incredible place. Verona Strong is the group who organized around our local restaurants at the beginning of the pandemic in particular and continue to do so. And that is run by Kate Curran and I apologize if I pronounce her name incorrectly, Kim Nachbauer. And they organized, but they also made a point to tell me that they were the organization, Verona Strong was the organization that donated the masks and tumblers to all of our administration and teachers at the beginning of the school year. And that's, that's a great pick me up for them, I'm sure. So thank you to them and thank you to Verona Together for all of your work.
And thank you for the clarification. It is, it's a nice problem to have that we have so many organizations in town stepping up to support our, our schools, our community. It's really, it's very nice. So thank everybody for that. I think we can wrap up. Our next meeting is Tuesday, January 26th. And the confidential session will begin at 5:30 with our public session beginning at 7:00 PM. And with that, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Drapi, second by Mrs. Prisco. It's 9:14 and all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
And all opposed? There is no one. So again, it's 9:14 and thank everybody for your time. I appreciate. I like having this big panel of, of administrators and teachers and stuff. It's nice to see a lot of faces. So thank you very much and we'll see everybody again on the 26th. Have a good night.
Everybody.
Bye.